Before we get things kicked off, we'll have an invocation this evening. I'm glad to have our councilman, Ranny Blankenship, do the invocation this evening.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for the blessings which you have given us. We ask you be with us tonight as we conduct the city's business and be with us and give us the guidance and the leadership we need that we make decisions that are best for the city. We thank you for all that you've done for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll ask Mrs. Hoffman to please take roll call.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp.
Here.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. You've received a copy of the minutes from the August 2nd, 2016, regular council meeting, and the August 16th, 2016, special council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll ask that we motion to accept as adopted, or adopt as presented, excuse me. A motion by Mr. Dunhoff, seconded by Mrs. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of our agenda. You've received a copy of the agenda for the September 6th, 2016, regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections made at this time? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adopt as presented. Motion by Mr. Meyer, seconded by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, we'll move on to the special presentations. Our first item is the oath of office of three officers. Chief, are you getting us started? Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and read the oath of office. If at the end you'll say, "I do," have right hand in the air, left hand on the Bible. Okay. I, let's see, how should we do this? It says your name. Let's go ahead, we'll say, state your name. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute, to the best of my ability, the office of Sergeant, Lieutenant, and Assistant Chief according to the law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of the state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help me God. Congratulations.
Good job, man. Good job, guys.
Good job. You know, your family looks better than you guys.
You don't get out of it that easy.
This is what happens when an Assistant Chief retires. It has a trickle up effect with the new promotion of Todd Brendel from Lieutenant to Assistant Chief, Brandon Marksberry from Patrolman to Sergeant, and Sergeant Kyle Raider from, Sergeant to Lieutenant. These promotions were very easy to make because the department and the city, and especially me, have been blessed by having a lot of good people to choose from. It's always a difficult decision when we have to make these promotions because there's always three to four people that are qualified to take over these jobs. These three gentlemen excelled in the process. I can start with Todd Brendel. He's been in law enforcement for 26 years. He's been with Erlanger for 20. He was one of our DARE officers for 11 years. He was the SRO of the Year many years ago, I can't remember when. He was, I think, SRO for the state and you were nationally recognized as an SRO. He made the program what it is today. He was a patrol sergeant after he came out of the DARE program, moved on to Lieutenant, and I'm proud to announce him as the new Assistant Chief for Police Department. Todd, anything you say? I'm sure you have something to say.
I just want to say thank you first to the council, mayor, appreciate it. A lot of thanks to Chief Wilson for giving me this opportunity, Chief Fields, Chief Aaron's, and Greg Sandell for hiring me back in the day. So I appreciate that. Only thing I got to say is to the guys in the back, I'm here to work hard for you, work with you guys as much as possible, and I want to thank my family for being here.
Kyle, I said be brief, and you were brief, so. I asked each one of them to give me a little bit of something to say because I can't remember anything anymore. Kyle's been with us for seven years. He's married, he has two children, a one-year-old and a seven-year-old. Started with us in 2008, he became Bike Officer, an SRT operator, firearms instructor, and then he was promoted to Sergeant in six years, and now to Lieutenant in eight years. He's excelled very quickly in this organization just because of his hard work and dedication. There's other people that are following in his footsteps, and Kyle, yours?
You know, it's not fair because everything that I was going to say I told Todd Brendel, and then he went ahead and used it. So, you know, I, same thing, you know. I can't thank council enough, everybody that's been involved in the process for just giving me the opportunity. Same thing with my family, you know. Grew up with, you know, hardworking parents who instilled that in me, and, you know, I try to pass that on to my two boys. My wife that puts up with a terrible schedule for the last couple of years, and, you know, same goes for the guys. Everything that you have done for me, the opportunities that you've given me, I hope to, you know, keep working hard and do whatever it is that you guys need me to do. Thanks.
And the last of the promotions is Brandon Marksberry. Brandon came to us in 2007. No, messed that one up. 14, I'm sorry. He started out in Grant County Sheriff's Office in 2005, then went to Elsmer Police Department where we stole him from Elsmer. We always wanted Brandon over here, to be honest. He's married with four children, 19, 12, 11, and 8. He has three girls and one little boy. Brandon's also one of those success stories that we have stolen from other departments. That's what we try to do. We don't admit to it all the time, but we always seek out the best from other departments and try and make it attractive enough for them to come here and work for us to make our organization a better place for everybody. Brandon?
Hello. First, I want to thank the city, I want to thank the council, the mayor, everybody from the city. It's a great place to work. I'd have been other places, like the other two. I've got more variety, and I tell you, this city is, city is nice. It's a great place to work. It's going to be a retirement place for me. It's, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to serve the city. I'm going to prove to you that I gave you all that I have to make the city, put my part into the city, make it better as well. I see everybody else, the guys on the street, the fire department, the police department, the council, the city, the clerks everywhere in the city building, putting in their part to make this city what it is, and it is truly a great city. I want to thank my wife, who puts up with me, Laura Elper. She's been great through the schedule changes, and she reminds me somewhat every day, but she's great. My kids, they love what I do. They take pride in what I do. I just want to tell them, thank them, and let them know that Dad is very, very thankful for them. And God bless the city of Erlanger.
We go ahead to the service pins?
Yeah.
The first one, I'm going to do SRO Abney, where are you? Although this isn't a promotion, it's probably going to take me just a few more seconds to read than everybody else since he's getting his 35-year pin tonight. Scott came to us in 1978 on the Erlanger Rescue Squad. I think Patty, you remember that, don't you?
Oh, sure.
1980, he was hired as his dispatcher. 1986, he was hired as a police officer. From '91 to '92, he taught DARE. From '96 to '98, he was a detective. '98 to 2003, he was a sergeant on the road. 2003 to 2009, he was a road lieutenant and assigned to dispatch at that time, and then, quote unquote, he abandoned ship in 2009. He retired as a lieutenant. I think it was a road lieutenant at the time. And he was rehired back in 2010 as an SRO where he said he's never been happier. So it is my honor to give Scott Abney his 35-year service pin tonight to the city of Erlanger.
I hired Kyle Raider, Lieutenant Raider. Where'd he go? Did he leave? He embellished that a little bit. I just, I enjoy what I'm doing, always have. Just, it's actually 38 years, I think. So, but yes, Patty was here before me. So, thank you all.
I was, yeah, I was shorter. Yeah.
And Dispatch Manager Dave Leonard is going to present the next one.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Daniel Lucibio is getting his five-year pin tonight. Danny started with us in 2011. He graduated in 2012 from the Department of Criminal Justice Training Academy as a valedictorian. Since then, he's taken additional courses in tactical dispatch, which is, in the event that we would need to go out in the field, operations, have a dispatcher out in the field with the officers, he's trained in that area. And currently, other than dispatching, he is also working with our IT department. He has knowledge and experience in that, and he is actually assisting Matt Allen with that when time is available. Danny?
I just want to say thank you for giving me an excellent place to work for the past five years. It's been great working here. I love this place. And I hope I can continue my career here at Erlanger, possibly in additional roles other than dispatch in the future, but, well, I just want to say thank you very much.
Ed, you've got the next one?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Tonight, we're honoring Sean Zitt. Sean came to us five years ago. He's a 2007 graduate from Lloyd High School, so that really makes me feel old. Proud dad of a five-year-old girl, Riley. And he's, Sean's just all-around good guy. He loves his job, loves working for the city, grew up in the city. He is one of the sick ones that says, "I can't wait for winter." He loves the snow. I don't understand it. Sean?
Yeah, like Ed said, I really enjoy working for the city. I grew up here, so everybody who took part in giving me this opportunity, I truly appreciate it. And I look forward to spending the rest of my career here, truly do. Thank you.
We have the distinct honor of honoring Ms. Lisa Hume this evening. She will be receiving her 20-year service pin. 20 years, as of this date, this actual day, 9/6/96. Thank you. She was 14 when she got hired here. It's like, I don't know about the city ordinances and labor laws, but something you might want to look into. 20 years. Some things about Lisa, just a few things. She loves Servati's Bakery. She does not care for Panera Bread. And do not eat her lean cuisines in the freezer. Three things I've learned in my three years here. Seriously, Lisa has been a constant and a consistent glow in our department. You know, as chief for approaching three years in October, when I was first named chief, it was a little controversy. I mean, the command staff was basically people that had run for the position, so there was some awkwardness there. And before I could really instill a command staff that had the same vision, Lisa was my command staff. I really confided in her, I trust her, and she was really my savings grace for the first year of the job. So words cannot say enough to thank her for the things that she does for us. I know her husband Gordon's here tonight. I see the three Cs. Carly, man, Colleen's the middle one. Middle one's always, I can never remember. And Christie. And I know your mom and dad are here, a great part of our department, a vital part of our department. Just want to congratulate her on 20 years.
I just want to thank the city and the fire department for the 20 years. I enjoy coming to work every day. I love my job, so I plan on retiring here another eight years, and I am on my fourth chief, so hopefully the final one. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we've got a proclamation. I see we've got Brooklyn Smith here, and we've got Brooklyn's parents and family, and some of the folks from Smile for Brooklyn. If you guys wouldn't mind coming, coming forward. I'll go ahead and start reading this. Proclamation by the mayor of the city of Erlanger, Kentucky, "To all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas every year, an estimated 250,000 of new cases of cancer affect children under the age of 20 worldwide. And whereas one in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed with cancer by the time they are 20 years old. And whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children under the age of 15 in the United States. And whereas childhood cancer occurs regularly, randomly, and spares no ethnic group, socioeconomic class, or geographic region." Easy for me to say. "In the United States, the incidence of cancer among adolescents and young adults is increasing at a greater rate than any other age group, except those over 65 years old. And whereas childhood cancer is not just one disease, it's made up of a dozen types of countless subtypes, and research is vastly and consistently underfunded. And whereas the city of Erlanger would like to recognize that all children deserve the chance to dream, discover, and realize their full potential, and the young people fighting for that opportunity, and all those who commit themselves to working toward a cancer-free world should be supported and recognized. Now therefore, I Tyson Hermes, mayor of the city of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim September 2016 to be Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Erlanger, and do commend this observance to all our citizens, given under my hand and the seal of the city on this day, on this sixth day of September 2016." I'll go ahead and present you with the proclamation.
For those of you that don't know who I am, I am Brooklyn's uncle and also president of Smile for Brooklyn Incorporated. We are honored and very thankful to be here, thankful to all the city and Mr. Mayor for your support with this. This is something that we hope to take beyond Kenton County to the state level and also to the national level. Brooklyn has been an honor and an inspiration to all of us. Myself, Brooklyn and her grandparents live in Erlanger, and we're very proud to be a part of the city and Kenton County. And again, we thank you for all of your support. And, you know, this was started in honor of Brooklyn, and we realized very quickly how many people this affects, and our goal is to think of, when you're thinking of Brooklyn, to think of all of those that may have been affected in the past, current, or in the future, and always smile for them. Thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda, we have the mayor's report. Try to be brief. I do have a few things I want to talk about. Tonight, we vote on a property tax and tangible tax decrease. Last year, as many of you may or may not be aware, we were one of only 14% of the cities in this state to have voted for a tax decrease. I've done a little bit of investigation. We may be the only city in the state to have adopted a tax decrease two years in a row. So that is something that will be distinct to us, something that we can, that we can brag about, and something that's going to attract businesses and industry to our city, along with homeowners. So I think a large congratulations are in order for this city council and the staff who's worked tirelessly to make this happen. I would like to give a round of applause. We've got development and growth that's happening across the city. I'll try not to steal the thunder from our economic development report, the committee report, but some of the stuff's too exciting not to talk about. We've got the CVS and the bargain hunt now that's open next to the post office. We've got the Long John Silver Building that's come down, and a Tim Hortons that's going up in its place. Something that I want to make sure everybody's aware, we've got a contract, or not we, but there has been a contract that's been accepted from a developer to National Amusements for the cinema property. This is a serious development, looking at going in there. The developer plans to attend our September 20th meeting to discuss their plans to develop the site. So Sher, if you wouldn't mind putting that on the agenda for the September 20th committee Tonight, we're also going to be getting the ball rolling on figuring out our sidewalk situation throughout the city. Councils discuss allocating money from the budget to repair or improve portions of the sidewalk to make it safer for our pedestrians. We have a proposal for a sidewalk survey that we will be discussing later in the meeting. We have representatives from Precision Concrete here this evening on hand that are, they can answer any questions that we might have. The survey is a reasonable place to start. It's hard for the council to decide how to attack the problem if we don't know the magnitude of the project that we're getting into. So this will help us make those choices on our budget. I wanted to note 3410 Cowie. Our public works have gone through and cleaned up the site there. They spent some considerable time. There is, there was actually a house underneath all those vines. It looks a lot better. The house is still in really horrible shape, but it's nice to see something happening there. And Mr. Fields told me that it's going to be sold in October at Commissioner's Sale. Oh, excuse me. Thank you. September 27th, Frank informed me. I wanted to let council know, I did receive a letter from the Diocese of Covington. While it is called the Diocese of Covington, Erlanger still falls within the diocese, for those of you that might not be Catholic. But September 11th, 2016, at 3:00 PM, they're going to have a 9/11, let me, excuse me, what are they calling this here? Yeah, it's to celebrate the 15th anniversary of the terrorist attack, or not celebrate, but special observance, excuse me, of the 15th anniversary of the terrorist attacks on our country. At September 11th, 2016, at 3:00 PM, at the Cathedral Basilica, the Assumption, in Covington, I want to make sure that you all felt welcome to come down to that. And then finally, I also wanted to just mention that we do plan on moving forward with the Fire Station and Facility Study and the committee that we had discussed at our last meeting. I just wanted to reiterate that again. We're talking Chief Whitaker, Rick Bogard, Gary Meyer, Tom Cahill, Linda Dietz, and Julia Prezioci. And I, Mark, did you want to be on the committee as well?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. I figured he didn't have enough to do with his time. Mark, we'll also have Mark on that. So it'll be a seven-person committee. I didn't want to pressure you into that.
No pressure.
Sorry, I hadn't mentioned yet. Okay, and so with that, that's the end of the mayor's report. We'll move on then to the reports of our committees. Public safety, under police, Mrs. Sudcamp?
Yes, I'm sorry Vicki isn't here this evening. I'm hoping that she feels better real soon. I'm going to make this pure and simple, guys. We need money. I don't know how to say it any more blatantly. We, in order to keep the quality and the caliber of people that we have in our police department, we have got to have more money for our entry-level positions. It's that pure and simple. The starting salary here is $41,000. Starting salary in Florence is almost $46,000. So, and they are recruiting our guys right out of school at the range. I mean, we cannot keep the quality people that we have now unless we come up with some more money to keep them coming. more money to keep them coming. So, it's real pure and simple. We're asking for a $5,000 raise for each of the new personnel. The total amount that we're asking for to bring people even closer up to the median range, which was something that Mark Fields came up with when we did away with the metric scale, in order to bring them closer to where they need to be, we need $90,000. And we've been considering putting 25, that's 25% of what we were considering to paint the bridge. Just happen to feel that our police department is far more important.
And the $90,000 is, that's all new hires and everybody else up to a median level?
Everybody closer up to the median level where they should be. No, it's not going to be equal to what the pay is elsewhere, but at least we can compete and won't have to lose people to other departments.
Okay.
Arrest my case? Police is in house. Chief.
I would like that, yeah, thank you.
I've got everything right here.
Okay. It'd probably be good to share with all the council.
Yes.
Can I add something? And it's kind of a question for Chief. How long do they, when we hire somebody, how long do they go to the academy? Okay, sorry.
How long do they go to the academy?
Yes.
23 weeks.
23 weeks, and that's at our cost, right?
Yes, it's 23 weeks in the academy. When they graduate from the academy, they go through a 14-week FTO program here, and then they're on probation from that point forward for a year.
And then have we in the past lost anybody in the academy to another police force?
Not in the academy. The way that it usually, that we've seen it happen in the past, they're under a three-year contract with the city.
Okay.
So we can recoup our expenses for training and equipment, things like that, for the first three years. The first year is pretty much a wash for training.
Right.
The second year, they're figuring out how to do the job. The third year, what we're seeing is where are they going to go to make more money when that third year's over? So that's, that's how we see it right now. We're a little low on the beginning. Through the mid-range, we're doing better, but it's that initial salary that we're bringing people in at that was, that was our concern because of the length of the academy these days, it makes that POP certificate, the training certificate, that much more valuable. And people that don't have anything invested in this city per se, you know, they're going to go somewhere else for $10,000 or whatever the case may be, if they can do.
So technically, if we come up with the $90,000, we're not going to be paying for as many people to go to the academy because we'll be able to retain more, so.
That's what we're hoping.
Yeah, so that's actually going to help us financially, too.
Hope so. Yeah, because it costs, it costs the city $80,000 before the police officer takes one call on their own, in their own car.
So, I mean, I think that's a no-brainer. You guys need the money.
I have a question, Chief.
Sure.
What kind of turnover are we actually talking about?
Well, the most recent turnover that we've had is due to retirements. So the last, I'd say the last, other than a couple behavioral issues, there hasn't been that many. But what we're seeing is other departments are picking people up out of training, not out of the police academy, but out of other training classes, because they don't want to invest the time and the money in the police academy any longer. And if they can get someone who's certified and trained, they'll offer them a lot more money. Now, the money that we're asking, the money that we're talking about here is for the lowest-paid 24 patrol officers. It's not for supervisors or lieutenants or Assistant Chief or myself. It's just for the lowest-paid 24 patrolmen. And it wasn't to get them to the range of, say Florence or Boone County or those, but it gets them closer.
Okay. When we share the salary assessment, I guess, can we also share the non-retirement, the non-behavioral turnover?
Sure.
Because it sounded like there might be a little bit of a conflict with you saying it doesn't happen that often versus it's happening all the time.
Well, what we're trying to do is retain the people that we have. We're not saying that we have a huge turnover right now, because we haven't seen a whole lot of turnover. But what we're trying to do, we're seeing it happen more and more and more in North Kentucky, and we're trying to prevent that from happening so that we don't, we're trying to spend a little on the front end so we can save in the back end.
Sherri, I think I might be able to, I mean, we have been so blessed that we have had career officers for so long that it hasn't been an issue. So now, with, you know, all the hatred and, and everything that's out there. No, I'm just saying, we've been so blessed that we haven't had any turnovers because we've had all these career men. Now, we need to keep getting career men, and that's why we need to entice them with more money.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand what the scope of the problem is. We're saying we have a huge problem, but on the other hand, we're saying we don't have a problem, so.
Well, it is not critical at this, at this point, but we're looking ahead to our future. Basically that.
Chief, would it also be possible to get the information of the, how many officers we have coming to the end of that three-year contract?
Oh, sure, yeah. I have it on the document already.
Okay, okay, good. Great, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then next up, we've got, under Public Safety, Fire EMS. Mrs. Skidmore, Mr. Meyer.
I think in light of the time that we're being, all the numbers added up this time. There were no DOAs, so everything, and the actual inspections, they're pretty close to being where they should be for having four months left, about 60%, so they're off about 5%, but I'm sure that they'll make those up throughout the rest of the four months. And with the conversation we just had, the police department, Chief Whitaker's in the house, and he's probably going to bring up some of the same things.
I actually didn't know Chief Wilson was going to touch on that, nor Councilmember Sudcamp, so I'm kind of going to build from that a little bit. First of all, though, I, I'm going to build on that. First of all, I want to, I want to take just 40 seconds to thank this city. I want to thank every member of the council, the mayor, city manager, everybody affiliated with the city for the support, for the encouragement that I received over the last year and a half to complete my college degree. It is a blessing to have that support, and I am very, very grateful to everyone for that, and I thank you immensely for dealing with my absences over the last year and a half and putting up with that. It might be worse now that I'm here, but you all have to deal with that. I wanted to touch base real quick on the shared services, and that's what I'm going to call it, just for lack of a better term, that kind of came out last month. The mayor had mentioned it, and it's kind of taken on a life of its own. The reason that shared service was even discussed was because, unlike PD, we're at a critical point in the fire department. I received a resignation today from a member. Three, four years, Dave, I guess? Two, two, two years. He's leaving us for another city simply based on money. Very comparable departments, they make $10,000 more dollars a year for the same position. So going back to the shared services, the reason that we started talking with Fort Mitchell was because Chief Alford is experiencing the same issues. I think many fire departments are experiencing the same issues. However, Chief Alford was a willing participant to sit down and talk, what can we do? You all in council have known me for three years, and you know I stand up at every budget retreat, every chance I get to tell you, I pull out my soapbox, which I carry in a backpack, and I stand on it, and I beg for more money for the department. And I think sometimes maybe it's viewed as crying wolf at this point, but it's really not. I'm not asking to be the highest-paid department, but we have to be competitive. There's a small, little, tiny dot city in Campbell County that is paying $10,000 more dollars to start out than we are. We make the second-most runs in the county. I guess us and Independence are pretty close, right behind Covington. These guys ride on the highway today for six hours unloading a semi, and they haven't stopped. They had time to take a shower, not even eaten dinner tonight. We have good people, and when I received that resignation today, it hurt. It's a punch in the gut. I don't want these young guys to leave. I want to have career officers. I would have loved to have been standing here in five years and giving that person that left today a promotion. That's not going to happen. We've got some issues. Chief Alford and I have thought, what can we do? Share employees, share this, cross the line, standard operating guidelines, maybe same medical director. We can cut, we can cut here. Do we need this piece of apparatus? Maybe we can maneuver this. Staffing models have yet to be worked out, and this is not a million-dollar savings in a year. It's not. But what it is, is it's saving the integrity of a department, a department that people here in the city rely on. And the thinking outside of the box to the shared services is really just, it's grown. And like I said, it's taken a life of its own, and perhaps I introduced that improperly. I'll take sole responsibility for that. But it's my job, I have to look out for the betterment of these guys, and these are my guys. And I'm trying to do everything I can. So going out on a limb, thinking some outside-the-box thinking, creative ideas, that's where we're at. And we're sitting down and we're looking at staffing models because we have willing chiefs that are willing to do it. So really, you know, I can talk numbers. I think, I know my number guys here, fortunately, tonight, I think what'd we say, $200,000 or something to get every single member to the median point. And I know that's a lot of money, and I get that. I'm looking to be competitive. I don't understand why we can have a department of our size, the run volume that we have, the workload that these guys have, and then other departments can pay $10,000, $12,000 more a year. I don't understand. And I'm glad Chief Wilson brought it, I'm glad Patty brought it up tonight, and again, I know you've heard me harp on this for three years, but I just didn't know where else to turn and start, I got to be creative. So, it's in, you know, it's in the hands. I think we'll work on it. I trust that this city, and I know it's a real interesting time going into the political climate in two months, and I know all those things, and I've learned a lot about politics in three years. But when it all comes down, the thing that's most important of the men and the women of the public safety divisions, in my eyes. So, that's it. I'm going to put my soapbox back in the backpack. If you all have any questions, I will answer them. Thank you for your time, and again, thank you for the support over the last year and a half.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, next up, we've got Public Works. Mr. Cahill, Mr. Skidmore.
Yes, you should have a report. Mr. Milliken actually sent that out to everybody. One thing we do want to talk about is Riggs Avenue Reconstruction, has been going on since August 29th. We're asking the citizens, when possible, please use alternative routes of travel. This will help with the convenience of the contractors and hopefully speed along the process for that, so.
I don't have anything, thank you.
All right, Mr. Milliken?
I don't have anything.
All right, thank you. All right, then next up, we've got Administration. Mr. Howard, Mrs. Cahill.
Bad news, property tax bills will be sent out the first week in October, so let you all know about that. To receive a 2% discount on your tax bill, tax payments must be received by or on, I believe that'll be November the 1st.
No. We've changed it back to the end of October. Sorry. The clerk got on me hard last week. So, so it is, it is the normal, regularly scheduled end of October.
There's an ordinance that states it's supposed to, the discount's in October.
All right, so, so to receive a 2% discount on your tax bill, payments must be received by or on October 31st. Those who are, for those people who are 65 or over, there are exemptions available to help lower your taxes. Under the provisions of the Homestead Amendment, a person or persons must be 65 years of age or older, or totally disabled during the year for which the application is made, and must own, occupy, and maintain a residential unit for such an exemption. If you qualify for an exemption and are currently not receiving it, please contact Kenton County's Property Evaluation Administrator, and I've got that telephone number, and the clerk's got that phone number. This exemption will help you save money on both your county and your city tax bills, so please be aware of that. Let you all know, in August, we collected $8,430 in taxes, and for the year 15, 16, we collected a total of $4,202,538 in taxes, but we're still, $45,686 are still delinquent, so let you know that as well. My system is heavy.
We need a motion from council to set trick-or-treating in Erlanger as of October 31st, 2016. This needs to be done now so that the date can be placed in our newsletter that will be mailed out in our tax bills. So, later on, we need to do that. And then anybody who would like to, city council, do the KLC Annual Conference in Exeter and Lexington, it's October 4th through the 7th. You need to contact Sherri as soon as possible so she can make reservations for you. And we have two events left, well, actually, two events, but one of the events is a different date. The first one is free yoga in the park, at Flagship Park, and that will be on 9/7, 9/14, 9/21, and 9/28. If you need to relax from a hectic summer, come join us for an hour of movement that includes stretching, strengthening, and relaxation. Yoga's what puts us into and gets us ready to go. So, anybody who would like to do that, you just need to show up and bring yourself a yoga mat, bring yourself some water, and enjoy free yoga at the Flagship Park.
Kathy, what time is that?
Uh, she didn't say, but somehow I thought it was.
I thought it was 7:00. Was it 7:00?
I think it's 7:00.
I think it was when I looked on my schedule.
I think it's 7:00.
Yeah, it is.
I think it's 7:00.
6 to 7.
Okay, 6 to 7. On his trusty dusty little, yep, there you go. Okay, 6 to 7, all those dates, 9/7, 9/14, 9/21, 9/28. Then Sunday.
Hey Kathy, can you speak into the mic?
Yes, I will. Then on 9/18, Sunday, is Heritage Day at the Depot Park. Join us for an afternoon of family fun and celebrate the heritage of our community. This year's celebration will include a flag-raising ceremony, arts and crafts, food booths, petting zoo, and pony rides, inflatables, entertainment, and carriage rides. You can also visit the museum and the newly renovated caboose. We hope to see you there. And I think if you want to, still, I think there's probably still time to get a booth, so you need to call the Historical Society. You can call up here at the 727-2525, and they'll hook you up, and you can have a booth if you'd like to still have a booth then. All right, I think that's it, and Sherri?
The only thing I have is the motion for the trick-or-treat. It's not under legislation, so we would need to do that right now. That's okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, we need to have the motion to have trick-or-treat on the 31st, which is Monday?
It's a Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have a motion from, motion on the floor?
It's 6 to 8. It's 6 to 8.
6 to 8 on Monday, the 31st.
Right.
Okay, that's the motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Sherri. All right, is that it? Anything else? Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to Economic Development and Finance. Mr. Blankenship, Mrs. Pitts.
The finance staff is in the final stages of closing the books for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016. The auditors are scheduled to be onsite October 17th, and we expect to have a preliminary unaudited financial statement for the 2016 fiscal year, ready for distribution in the coming weeks. When that's completed, staff will immediately begin work on the July financial statements, and Steve's in the house.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bodie. All right, then we'll move on to Codes, Building, and Zoning. Mr. Dunhoff, Mr. Burke.
We have nothing, but Mr. Fields has a couple things.
Do I address that now?
No, I'll do it under my report.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, then we'll move on to Progress and Revitalization. Mrs. Pitts, Mr. Cahill?
No report.
No report.
All right, thank you. All right, you've heard the reports of our committees. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Mr. Meyer, seconded by Mrs. Sudcamp. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, then we'll move on to the reports of representatives. Are there any reports this evening? Kentucky Alliance?
Yes, I'm always going to have one.
Yes, I'm always gonna have one because they had no reading today. The Kent County Alliance has been from noon until 2:00. Chris Connors spoke. He was from Lordville, Kentucky.
Drug strike force, and drug abuse, and heroin started in the 1900s. It came from China. And then in the 60s, it came from Vietnam. The 60s and 70s, it came from Vietnam. And now it's coming out of Afghanistan. So the heroin use is decreasing, but now it's moving on to the fentanyl and car-fentanyl. And that's what we've been hearing all, that's what we've been hearing in the news for the past week or so. So, basically, this Chris Connors talked about fixing the system with the drug abuse. Kent County Alliance, their stand is in preventing drug abuse to begin with. And one of their projects that they do with the schoolchildren is called the Metamorphosis Project. And they're gonna do that again this year. It's actually a butterfly garden, and 11 schools will be participating. And their motto, or their goal, is "Healthy Choices for a Beautiful Future." And that's why they use the butterflies. And they're also gonna be doing their silhouette program. Tishner, Lloyd, Notre Dame, and Twin Huffle will be doing essays about a drug-free life. And then they make posters, and then they display those in the schools, and then last year, they displayed them down at Joseph Beth Bookstore in Crestview. Our annual meeting is October the 4th, and Stacy Tapke will be our speaker. And also, Kent County Alliance has been funded again, so they'll be able to stay in business of getting rid of the drug alcoholism. And the DFC grant was awarded to Grant County, Pendleton, and Owen. They each get $100,000 for five years for this program that this grant was for. And I think that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
All right, thank you, Renee. Are there any other reports? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the reports of City Operations. We'll start with the City Engineer, Mr. Biaux.
Yes, sir. A little later in the agenda, we're gonna be reading the bids for the Earlanger Road and Phase 1 reconstruction. I pointed out at the last meeting that it was the sixth project of the top six that we had for this year's budget. There were eight projects we gave you, but we knew that the last two may not fit within the budget. We were hoping that you would fund them. But I want to tell you where we are at this point. Based on the one we're gonna award this evening, which is the sixth one, the total of the, all six projects is $1,436,000. That is $116,000 under the numbers that I gave you when the budget was done, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's that much under the budget. The Public Works Committee is going to review those. I've delivered that information to Mr. Bogart and Mark Fields, and they're gonna be chewing on those numbers, and hopefully we'll be discussing them in the future.
What was the amount?
We are running under to this point.
What was the amount again?
Currently, our total of the six projects is $1,436,000.
Thank you.
We won't take bids on the other two until you decide whether you want to fund those during this year, or they will have to move into next year. And there are, Riggs Avenue, Earlanger Road, the completion of those is gonna be necessary. So those two, second phase of those two projects, will stay at the top. But the line items 7 and 8, in this year's budget, if they can't be funded before the end of the budget year, they will move into next year. That's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Biaux. Next, we've got the City Attorney, Mr. Gatlin.
Yes, tonight, we do have two second readings on. One is the tax ordinance, and my thunder's already been stolen, that we are making the change of the deadline to October 31st from November 1st, upon the recommendation of the clerk, and an ordinance from about 20 years ago. I know, it was me. I shouldn't have gotten creative and moved it to November 1st without speaking to the clerk. In all fairness, it was a, it was not a conscious decision to move it to November 1st. So, so October 31st is the only change, that's a non-substantive change, so we can move forward with the second reading. Obviously, the tax rates are the .337 on real property and .589 on the personal property. That's the same that was composed of the first reading. The second, second reading has to do with the Home Occupations Ordinance. This is the text amendment, which was recommended and approved by PDS. This was somewhat of just a housekeeping measure to comply with more people working from home. We made an addition saying that no more than one person not residing in the home shall be permitted to be engaged in the operation of the approved home operation, and that the selling of any commodity shall be ancillary to the home occupation and done primarily through the internet or telecommunications. Also, that there would be no other signs that would be mentioned at the location, that all home occupations shall be licensed by the applicable local, state, and federal agencies. And all persons operating the home occupation, when required, would have to have all necessary professional licensers and certifications. So that is what is moving forward with second reading tonight. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next, we've got the City Council Attorney, Mr. Wickman.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I've only got two items. Number one, as the mayor indicated, the property on Cowie Avenue is scheduled for sale by the Master Commissioner on September the 27th. Through the litigation that we instituted to have that property sold, that will require, or at least I would recommend, an executive session pursuant to KRS 61810, sub-paragraph C, to discuss that sale and our bidding on it. So I'll need a motion to that effect.
Right now?
Now, or later. Doesn't make any difference, but I need a motion sooner or later.
You can do that after.
Well, how about we motion after we do legislation?
That's fine.
Okay.
The other item is, I need a, would like to have a committee meeting to discuss the amendment of our ordinances in regard to House Bill 422. That's the nuisance ordinance and the code enforcement program, and also our codification, the review of our codification.
All right.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, great.
Along those lines, I know the September meeting is filling up rather quickly, I think. Is there any way that we could push that one to October?
Sure.
I mean, 'cause I know we're meeting. Would that work for the codification too, Jack, in your opinion? Yes?
Um, yeah. I mean, the House Bill 422 stuff needs to be in by January 1st, but we certainly can make that done. Yeah, that's fine.
I just believe those are gonna be very long meetings. I think they're gonna take a lot of time to get done. So, that's just a suggestion. If we need to do it in September, that's fine. I just think it'll be a very long meeting in September.
Okay. I think that's a good recommendation.
We do have, we do have to do, we have to have it passed and have the new thing, 422, by January 1. But that would still give us November and December, because we do have meetings both those days.
Yes.
That'd be okay for you?
That's fine.
Okay. So, Ms. Hoffman, can we push those two to that one?
October.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Fields, you want to move into your city administrative report?
Sure. Okay, a couple things. You guys remember, I think a few months ago, came to you asking if we could file a joint application for a grant for a sidewalk along Dahlwick Drive and Miniola Drive with Boone County. And I'll, I guess I'll let you take shots at me on this one, because I believe that night, I even said, I didn't believe our chances were really good at getting this grant. Well, I've since changed my mind. I do believe that we're probably going to receive this grant. They're doing the official action on Thursday, two days from now. So we'll see. We've made the final cut, so we'll see if in fact that, do that. Y'all know that's about a $3 million project, so that's a pretty big bite to come along. So, in saying that, I would like to put sidewalks on the 16th, or the 20th committee meeting, because I think we need to talk about sidewalks on the other side of this. And we've also applied for two more grants for sidewalks. One would be along, the application's due, we're, the 30th, we are in the process of applying for these, more funds. One would go, it's Narrows Road, Nelson Road, go from Brightleaf all the way down through, and then the other one would be Division Street. So we will know something about those in the not-too-distant future.
Mr. Fields, I got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Is that grant in addition to the money we've budgeted for the sidewalk?
We've got money's budgeted for it, but these money, this grant opportunity came up, so we just went ahead and are applying for it. Mr. Biaux, it's gonna be like half and half. So we're gonna do part, the first part of Nelson, I believe, with the grant, and then the second part of Nelson with the funds that we have budgeted, is what our plan is.
That'd be in this, this fiscal year?
Yes, I do believe that'd be awarded the first of the year. Lot of sidewalk going on. Also, just talking on sidewalks since we're here, and these gentlemen are here from Precision. We talked about this at the last committee meeting. This is something that, there's gonna be a resolution tonight, read about spending this money. We have to have someplace to start. We are getting several, several, several complaints each week, reference deteriorating sidewalks in the city. We need to get on this and address it. We don't have the manpower to do this survey, this assessment, and this is the perfect opportunity for us to get this done. So staff's hope is that it will be supported tonight, and we can do that and move forward with that. So I think sidewalks, that's probably it on the sidewalks, part of that. Also, the house on Cowie, we talked about those. So, 3410, that is the house that we purchased. That's across from the one that's going up for sale on the 27th.
27th, yes.
We've purchased 3410. 3410 has been inspected by our building inspector. I have a recommendation from him that we demolish the house and tear it down. It's in such a point of, I think, disrepair, foundations falling in, those kind of things on this would be way too expensive for us to try to fix up and sell. You all remember, we've only, I think we got it for $6,000, I think, at the sale, something like that. So, you know, our recommendation is going to be to take bids to demolish that property. So if I could have some kind of, that's our recommendation. I'll answer any questions anybody has for council?
Definitely. I'm terrified somebody's gonna be killed in there.
Have we had any conversations with the adjoining property owners? Have they showed any interest?
No, sir, we have not. That was our plan, was to try to move forward and do that. If in fact, we've got the approval of council to go move forward in that direction, we will talk to the adjoining property owners and see if they're interested in, in that lot once in fact it is cleared and the house is done away with. So we'll look at that before we move forward and take all these, to see what this is. Taking bids doesn't mean we have to move forward with it if we doesn't do the rest of it. So if we could at least get forward and move that and see how that would go.
Okay.
I have your approval to go ahead and set up a bid thing. Okay, thank you. The other thing is, after the committee meeting on the 20th, is we did take bids on the demolishing of the properties on Lower Earlanger Road. We need to talk about that at the committee meeting and discuss these bids that we've had. There's a wide range. As a matter of fact, there's about a $36,000 difference between the lowest bid and the highest bid on this, to demolish these properties. This is something that we need to move forward with and try to get this done. However, it's not budgeting money. We didn't budget any money for the demolition of these properties down there. However, I believe the police chief will, when, will talk, and Public Works can speak as to the need of getting these properties removed due to all the vandalism and criminal activity and other things that are going on in these properties, that we need to get rid of them and get them down. So if we could discuss that, about awarding this bid on the...
What are the addresses again, on Earlanger?
Seven, Ed?
710.
710.
Okay.
There's two.
The main house is 710.
The other one would be like 704, 702.
Two houses and a barn.
Yeah, there's two houses and a barn, and then I believe another, and two other utility sheds.
Oh, these are the black.
The blacks property, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So if we could add that on the agenda, and we can talk and go over those bids. We also need another on the committee meeting on the 20th. This is another request we got from a property owner for a text amendment for a property on Dixie Highway. There's an existing business up there now, so we need to talk about that. They want to go from a neighborhood commercial, or add neighborhood commercial, add large rental trucks to that, a use in that, and I believe that's what that is up on Dixie Highway. So if we could discuss that, Mr. Hahn would like to at least discuss that and get council's opinion about whether or not...
Is that the house on Dixie?
Yes, it is.
Oh, God.
Yes, it is.
Yep.
So, the property owner's been told that we could discuss this then, so he can make his case.
Yeah, okay.
To you all.
On the 20th?
On the 20th.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Hoffman, can you put up that email? I have one other thing, just quickly. All right, this is the Enclave at South Ridge. This is Dree's new development on Turkeyfoot Road. The red dots are where they are requesting lights. So, our ordinance says, 2258, says that we require intersections and cul-de-sacs for streetlights. They're requesting four for our approval. They'll put them up and do that. We're gonna talk to them a little bit about the type. We're going to try to get the new LED lights put in. However, council's approval on this would be, they can put them up, but what we have to do is approve the ongoing payment for the utilities that would go to these lights. There's no doubt that the very first one and the very last one, according to our ordinance, those are what we require. At least, that's the minimum we require. The other two would be additional that they're requesting. And that, so, we can either discuss this further at a later date, and again, at the committee meeting in September, or we can approve or deny this tonight, this request. Staff believes that it would probably be a good idea to have those four lights. There is a, going down into the cul-de-sac, it's going to be a dip, there's gonna be a, you know, a hill going down in there, so there will be some dark areas in the top. We don't believe that that's excessive for what it is if you look around town and other streets. So that would be staff's recommendation that we go ahead and approve that, with that. But I'm going to answer any questions.
I think we ought to do it now, because what's gonna happen, we're gonna do the same thing we did at Brightleaf. We're gonna come back at a later date, and we're gonna approve it. So we might as well prove it now for the safety factor of lights on that street, because it's gonna be a long street. There's 30 something houses out there, I feel that we need to go ahead and do that.
Other laws, they put them new lights in there.
Yeah.
The other problem is, this is an all-underground utility subdivision, and if you don't make the decision upfront, you don't have the wiring for it.
Yeah.
I think we ought to go ahead and do it, because it's gonna come back to us, so we might as well do it now.
And it is pretty dark. It's dark back there. I mean, it really is.
Mrs. Skidmore?
Well, several months ago, I mean, what happened to the idea where we were gonna put up some streetlights there along the, along Holbert from the library? What, what happened to that? We were looking into that, but nothing ever materialized.
I will let, I will let Mr. Milligan answer that one.
Did some streetlights that were there change it out to a brighter alley? Do you like, I don't know if you've noticed that or not?
No, I didn't. I didn't notice that.
Night after meeting, we're starting to think right now, why there is lit up a lot of lights.
Yeah, it is. Well, I'll have to look at that then, because I didn't...
Do you like that it changed out?
Okay, well, that's where I'm going first when I get out of this meeting.
There were some additional lights that we talked about putting along that sidewalk that were supposedly solar in nature that we were going to put up. that were supposedly solar in nature that we were going to put up. However, I believe that when you looked into that, wasn't there something about the cost that we...
Well, we wanted to probably with this LED light, change it out, see what kind of effect it would have on the money.
Right. Made a big difference.
I'll have to get with my citizen that brought this up and see if they're satisfied with what eventually was put there.
Let us know.
All right.
Um, that's it. So, do we need a motion?
Make a motion.
Something to do with those streetlights?
Make a motion.
Motion to adopt as shown, motion by Mr. Burke, second by Mrs. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. So I just wanted to address what Ms. Sudkamp and what Chief Whitaker was discussing tonight. And I can tell you that we've had those discussions on a pretty regular basis, and we've talked about it. In fact, this council enacted an ordinance three years ago to address this issue. I think the problem is, the past couple of years, we haven't put any monies in the budget, any significant monies in the budget, to address that makeup to get towards that midpoint. If you think about it, last year it was a two-point-seven, this year it was a one-point-seven, or I think it was two-point-seven last year. Am I right, Stephen, when I say that? One-point-seven this year, somewhere around there, so it was. And of course, the department heads have the ability to divvy out anything above the CPI, the COLA, that they see fit to any of their employees. The problem is, that pot's just not large enough to make that difference that they're seeing. I can tell you, just to verify those things that those people talked about tonight, those are all true facts. The fire department in particular is probably at a crisis mode. It's something that we need to address, and we need to address rather quickly. I can go back and tell you in past twenty-four, twenty-six months, there has been probably, this number isn't correct right now, because the numbers have changed since then, with today's resignation and another one's happened, but they've probably had a turnover of eleven to thirteen people in that amount of time. That's a huge turnover. That's a huge turnover. And I give credit to the chief for trying to look out and do the other things that he's trying to do, to find ways to do things. We talked about some things this past budget year to do, and we didn't do them internally, and we didn't present it to you all. I do believe, and I want to say this, you know, with the economic development forecast that we have, I believe it's very good. I believe all these new businesses coming into town, the new developments that we have, is a very good thing. So I think we could sustain some of this. We are having some meetings here in the next month that will probably shed some more light on our current budget. As you heard me say before, we're looking for ways to cut those numbers that we already have in there, that would not have a negative effect on our employees and/or the services and/or anything that we're doing with the city. There's just more efficient and, I think, economic ways to be doing some things that we can probably put in place. So keeping that in mind, you know, we'd like to get through those, bring it back to you all, and talk about that. You know, we're always doing the amendment in January, the budget amendment. We try to do it once a year to do. I think we will be prepared by then to make a presentation to you before then, to move forward with some kind of plan to look at, at least to present you something. You know, you were hit with something tonight that probably everybody was unprepared for to hear, you know, this coming up right now. So give us some time, I think, to work with it. We've had those discussions numerous times, both chiefs and everybody. To give everybody in this city a one percent raise, it costs about eighty, eighty thousand dollars, a one percent for the whole city. That's not just police, that's just not fire. And fire's done some really good work. They've given me numbers for the last three years about how to get everybody to midpoint. If you remember when we put that ordinance in effect, that midpoint was a goal for us to get to. What we never did was, we never to set a timeframe to get to that midpoint. I think that's where we failed. I failed to do that, and we set that. And we did that midpoint, you know, when we looked at our benchmark cities, you know, almost every one of our positions were almost dead last on that list. And we're gonna have to start addressing this now with public safety, especially I'll be on the fire side because of the turnover that we have had. And every exit interview that's done, they're leaving because of money. It's just that simple. And it's something that we're going to have to address sooner or later and figure out some ways to do some things, whether that's pay increases, whatever it may be. We're gonna have to figure out some ways to address that, or it's definitely gonna come back and haunt us, I believe. And we have a lot of good people, and we'd hate to see any more of those people leave than what has already left, for what I believe is money. And that's what the exit interviews are saying, is that's why they're leaving. So give us that opportunity to do it. If you have any ideas, please let us know. We'd greatly appreciate it to talk about. But I do believe we can get together and have something, you know, that won't be outrageous, that will not affect the budget in some tremendously negative way. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. I think that's very well said, and I appreciate you saying that. I would like to also remind council, though, that when we established these midpoints and the salary ranges, it was when Toyota was here. And so I think, I think a lot of the employees are tired of hearing it, but they do have to understand that that was a significant impact for the city. And I do believe that we are pretty close to the point where we have been able to make up for where Toyota was. We're still continuing to move forward and try to continue to grow that base, that tax base. And ultimately, we will not have made up for Toyota until somebody is occupying that building and, you know, operating as they were. But, you know, I just ask that we keep that in mind still. All right, moving on in the agenda here, we've got correspondence. Mrs. Hoffman, do you have any correspondence this evening? All right, thank you. Then we've got the citizen in public comment. Do we have the list? Has anyone signed up to speak this evening? All right, first up on the list, we've got Mr. Mark Young. Welcome.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm here as a friend of Erlanger. I'm president of the West Side Action Coalition, which is Covington's west-side neighborhood. We're an urban neighborhood. It's a few blocks between the I-75 corridor and Madison Avenue and Pike Street down to Fifteenth Street. So we're not a very big neighborhood, but we are very much an urban neighborhood. Educationally, I'm an economist by training and a former money manager, and currently I'm a professional trader and analyst. I'm also a recovering naysayer, which is why I'm here. A few years ago, it was proposed that an organization come into our little neighborhood and start a farm and bring in chickens in an urban environment. I thought it was a pretty stupid idea. Not only was it not a stupid idea, but it was one of the best ideas we've had come into our neighborhood. It's been, not only, you know, a great thing to have a bunch of chickens and eggs and people getting pasture wonderful food, it's actually been a catalyst for development. It's absolutely flabbergasted me. We've got mothers bringing their children to come see the chickens. We've got the school bringing children down to learn about animal husbandry and, you know, biology and basic nature. You know, we've got neighbors taking excess eggs to other neighbors or trading for produce and things like that. And I, myself, I live within one hundred feet of five chickens, and then another three hundred feet, three hundred and fifty feet from a thirty-chicken farm. There aren't any problems with smells, there aren't any problems with noise. These are hens, these are not roosters. But the sheer quantity of activity that this engenders, neighbors meeting neighbors that they wouldn't seen each other before, extra foot traffic, increased feeling of security, which begets more foot traffic, which makes it even more secure, it's been a real boon. And it's been enough of a boon. I mean, it's, we've branded our neighborhood with chickens. When you come into the west side from I-75, we've got a building with a huge mural on it that says, you know, "Welcome to the west side," and it's got chickens on the whole side of it. It's, you know, five foot tall. It's all part of our brand. And it's not only been, not been a nuisance, but it's actually been enough of a drive for development that we've got the catalytic fund and local developers proposing to put in six, six townhomes in the three-hundred-thousand-dollar zone, directly contiguous to the chicken farm. I mean, it isn't driven development away, it's actually bringing it in. It's been a big move, and I'm hoping I can at least request that you consider in the future drastically liberalizing your ordinance with regard to your backyard fowl and things like that. Obviously, I don't have a dog in the hunt, but I'm a neighbor, and, you know, it's worked really well for us. Thanks for letting me speak, and if you have any questions, I'm very available. You can find me on Facebook. I'm happy to give tours of the neighborhood and let you see how we're actually doing this and see how well it works for folks.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Young. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next on the list, we've got Ms. George Ettnordlow. All right. And then we've got Marcus Estenfelder. Yeah, please go on up.
Thanks for having me. My name's Mark Estenfelder. I live at 616 Hallam Avenue, the corner of Teakwood and Hallam. I was here last month, spoke about stop signs in my neighborhood. But before I get to that, I'd like to thank the police officers, fire department, DMS, everybody that's here, city council. But, you know, I sit there and I listen to, you know, I think some of the talks last month kind of motivate, you know, moved me, and some tonight have moved me, and I'll say a little bit. I appreciate and I respect everything you do. For the pay that I hear that you get, I'm sorry. For putting your lives on the line, wow, thank you. Thank you for what you do. I mean, it's, you put your life in the line. I've got a dangerous job myself, but I, right now, I'm living on disability, which is about what you all make. I'm sorry. And I'm struggling. I'm struggling. So I feel your pain. I really do. But get back to where I'm at. I'm just here again because I'm not seeing the ball rolling. I've got some phone calls. Nothing's really happened yet with monitoring a stop sign in front of my house. We've got thousands and thousands of stop signs in the neighborhood. But my stop sign is very important to me because I have children, four of them. In July, one of my children almost got hit. They never stopped. Ball rolled right in front, car went right by, never stopped, didn't even hesitate. And it actually just happened again Sunday, let's see, Saturday, or Sunday, Sunday. It happened again. It was during, it was probably about seven o'clock. But they actually slowed down, the ball rolled out, but they continued right through. There was a slight hesitation, like, oh, there's a ball, look at it, there it goes. You know, luckily, we yelled, "Stop, don't chase the ball." And I think that comes down to what the police and everybody else are dealing across the nation. It's a lack of respect. We've got children that live in these neighborhoods, and when we let our kids grow up, or we're elders and whatever, and we grow up and we go, oh, we didn't have a stop sign there before, I don't need it now. You know, your kid should have known. No, you're the adult. You should know to stop. It's a lack of respect we got in this country right now, everywhere, everywhere. And I'd like to see something happen because honestly, when it happens, and it continually happens, and I actually have one gentleman, I called the police, and I don't know if they went and talked to him, but he's, he drives through the, he sees me out front, because I've been disabled from my job and I home a lot. He literally drives through and shows me the bird as he runs the stop sign, like, screw you, I'm not stopping. It's a lack of respect. And eventually, it's gonna get to the point where tempers are gonna flare, and I want it to stop before it gets to that, because it is a disrespect. And we need to get some of that respect back in this country. And I'd like it to start in my neighborhood. Thank you. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It's not only in his neighborhood, it's all over.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, it's in my neighborhood, too.
Holding stop is prevalent.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. It's, that's a tough, tough one to address, because it is, it's everywhere. And you're not the only one who calls and complains.
I'm making a foolish person.
Yeah, yeah. It's a tough one. Well, I'll pray that we can figure out a, some kind of solution on that. Okay, was there anybody else that wanted to...
I had a question about his comment.
Yeah, sure.
Do we have the ability to put speed humps in? I know they have them on, you know, Edgewood Road, Lyndale, and, you know, those sections. Is there any reason that we can't do that?
There's no reason we can't. I'm glad that Mr. Bogart isn't in the audience, because he might already have his hands around your throat.
Do you know if there's speed humps?
Yeah, now, I don't know about that, but speed humps do have a, there's a downside. There's a, there's a, one, the big downside is the snow clearing is much more difficult with those, and there is a lot of damage to the plows from, well, both to the speed hump and to the plow every winter. It's like they have to get redone.
It's hard on emergency vehicles.
Emergency vehicles, yeah.
And children riding bicycles at night that don't see them. We, people go over the handlebars and it'll land on their faces, so.
Yeah. There's also been some studies done that, and that's why you only see them, I think, on two streets in Edgewood, and you don't see them being used as a speed deterrent, because there's been some studies done. And the police department, I'll, I guess, let them answer this any further if they need to. But where, in fact, those humps are, those people speed up between the humps to get that speed back. So it actually causes problems to be worse in some areas where they go between them, speed up once they get over, accelerate at a high rate. That's why I think we've had this discussion about sweet speed humps here over the years. I know that I've been here. And all of those have come up more on the negative side than the positive side, about being able to control speed and doing some things.
Go ahead.
If somebody goes over it too fast and they damage their car, can they come through the city because of the speed hump?
Depends on the signage.
That might be tough.
Probably not.
Yeah. It might not stop them from trying.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Estenfelder.
You know, I have speed humps, but I think there's something that I've thought of that is possible. And it is actually, I think, the problem. I don't know how many accidents we have, but there's some US people here that people will go out the back end of Red River, which is right there for that dip, and it is dangerous. What about making that one-way in that section, which forces people to do comply through the airways, skip them that stop sign on Stevenson, come through in the neighborhood that misses the stop sign down there, they'll run through the neighborhood and go out. I mean, it's dangerous. I don't know if that's a possibility.
So you're saying the section...
...people think about going out, you know, it's being a one-way where you can't go out and take a left-hand turn, which part will come up under that dip. I tell my children, I'll take your license away if I go over, if I go over there, you're gonna have trouble with my car.
So you're talking about on perimeter between Stevenson and Hallam? Is that what you're talking about?
The perimeter part from the back of the house to where perimeter is the...
Right, from Stevenson to Hallam, perimeter, making perimeter one-way.
Making that part perimeter a one-way.
That'd be something that...
More people in meetings. Now, in the mornings, like, if you, and I've told the police, if you could sit in my circle, they'd watch for you. I'd rather you sit in my pay window and sit in the house, because they're looking, they come to that stop sign from both sides, looking up for a cop. They, you can watch them driving like this, looking for a cop, a cop. I'll let you sit in my house. But it would keep, I mean, in the mornings, between six-thirty and about seven-forty-five, everybody wants that stop sign. Everybody wants to, skipping the stop sign, coming up perimeter. So it's not gonna eliminate everything, but it's gonna eliminate people coming home from school and everything else, skipping and going around and going out. Which is a dangerous intersection anyway.
I agree with that.
Oh, it is. They're on Stevenson.
It's a fifty-fifty thing. It'll get rid of fifty percent of the issue, you know.
So what would it take to be able to change a portion of a street to one-way? It's a city street.
It's an ordinance.
I mean, is that not answered there? I mean, foreign events, has there been accidents there? Because, I mean, I know I come up through there, and I'm going slow, because there's always somebody that's right out front, because they don't see the car in the dip. I mean, it's dangerous.
Oh, I've been honked at there, just getting ready to pull out and stopping, at someone flipping me the bird from Stevenson Road.
The stop sign.
Yeah, like, whoa.
The nerve to eat a stop at a stop sign.
Yeah. I don't know what the next step is on that. Is that a, talk about committee, committee meeting? Okay, so we'll talk about that more on the twentieth.
Get some more on the 20th.
We didn't have enough. It'll be a busy meeting.
Right. I would suggest that the police department and public works get together and try to think about that one. Be ready to discuss that on the 20th if you would, please. Think about it.
Is that a public meeting?
Yes, public meeting. Yeah, it's right here, 6:30. Start a half hour earlier. All right, thank you. I like the recommendation. Okay, moving on then, do we have any old business unfinished?
We got this gentleman wants to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Decker.
Hello, everybody. I'm Thomas Decker. I live at 809 Nelson Road and I just was really coming tonight to commend you for fiscally, you know, taking a look at being responsible. I thought that when I read in the newspaper about you guys holding your tax rate or rolling your tax rate back, I thought that that was pretty impressive. But then I come tonight and I hear this conversation about, you know, the fact that we're underpaying our policemen and we're underpaying our firemen. And part of fiscal responsibility in my house is paying for the things that matter and doing without in times for the things that I can't afford. So as I was coming tonight, just to commend you for being responsible and rolling back and saying, you know, I don't see, you know, I'd fly a lot and, you know, they raised our airplane tickets based on fuel consumption. And when fuel prices dropped $3 a gallon, my plane ticket didn't go down, which doesn't show real fiscal responsibility to me. When I saw that in the newspaper that you guys were rolling back, I was like, this can't even be right. Right. And Tyson, you said that not many cities have done that in Kentucky. But I would say, just in sitting here tonight with my family and listening to the tale of woe with the fires, fire chief especially, and with the police, I would just encourage you that as a taxpayer, fiscal responsibility is a big matter for me. And when I see a city wrestling with it responsibly, I think that that should be commended. And I don't think that they need to be mutually exclusive. I think that you can think of the taxpayer, but at the same time, think hard about the things that matter most and make choices. Because at my house, you know, we have unlimited wants, needs and desires and unlimited income. And I know that you guys deal with the same thing, so I think that being fiscally responsible is, I commend you guys for that. I would encourage you guys to keep doing that and I would say that I hope that you make what we've heard tonight a big priority. I think that's important. Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, then, next item on the agenda is our bids. First one we've got is the Erlanger Road concrete project. Mr. Vioxx?
Yes, sir. We took bids last Thursday for Erlanger Road reconstruction. As I indicated, it was one of the six projects on our list. We had five bidders. You go to the last sheet, you'll see that JPS Construction was $267,492.40. Paul Michaels and Sons Incorporated was $294,263. M&amp;W Extravading Company Incorporated was $302,925.60. Atleta Inc., $305,134.60. And last was TMS Construction Incorporated, $316,697. Go back to the front sheet, you'll see that we're just, there was only $800 and some dollars underneath my estimate. So the prices are going up, so I'm glad we bid these early because contractors are getting busy.
Your estimates are just getting better.
Well, yeah, man. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to adjust them next year. I'll recommend we award the work to JPS Construction Incorporated.
All right, we've got a motion to award it to JPS from Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Go ahead, sir.
All right, thank you. Then the next item on the agenda is old business. Do we have any old or unfinished business to discuss? Mr. Skidmore?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw this out there about the train trussel. This is just an idea. Since we've got the train depot there, I just wondered how it would be to have a lot of these colleges that does graphics and artwork and stuff do screen paintings and put between the columns and make it look like you're driving through the history of Erlanger. And instead of spending a lot of money on that, just get some of these colleges that would work with us and put screen, screen paintings in between the columns. It would be like driving through the history of Erlanger.
That does sound neat. Do you have any colleges that you recommend?
Uh, no, not really.
Okay.
Have to check into that and see if there's available.
Okay.
I will say this, from the experience that I had with the logo, with Thomas Moore and with Northern Kentucky University, good luck, Mr. Skidmore, in getting help from either one of those universities in their graphic arts department or anything of getting that done without.
I just thought it was a good idea.
It's a great, it's a great idea and I would think there would be some students out there that would be more than willing to do that, but I didn't have a whole lot of luck with those two that, when we started working on the logo, so. Not like I have in the past and I was surprised by that, to be quite honest.
I think you've just earned your seat as the chairman of this committee. Great job, congratulations.
That's how it usually works. If you're the one that suggests something, you're the one that gets appointed to do it.
That's right. Got to be careful on coming up with the good ideas. Yeah, thank you. It's a great idea. All right, yeah, hopefully somebody will watch the tape and see that and say, that's something that they want to do.
It would be different, you know.
Okay, do we have any new business to discuss?
Still on old business.
Oh, still on old? Okay, I'm sorry. Did you have old? Okay, I'm sorry. Corinne, go ahead.
Well, he laughed, but it's kind of what he said, you know, about us being fiscally responsible and sitting here listening to our chiefs and everything. And I know I've expressed this before, but I'm just going to reiterate it. I think the money that we're even considering using for the train trussel needs to go to keep our police and our fire. And to, you know, if we do the, you know, the couple, the small murals or whatever that cost 20,000 or something like that, I'm fine with that to, on the concrete to make it look better. But I think we need to just scrap the whole trying to clean it and paint it and use that money where it's more important. And that's, and that's all I wanted to say.
Good job.
Plus, we also got to come up with sidewalk money, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other old or unfinished business?
I work with R. R. You remember to talk about.
Right.
Gee, we figured that out.
Well, thanks for coming.
And Norfolk's worse.
I fought them for 10 years before we even had the mayor suggest that we do something with that ugly thing. Yeah, it'll never happen. Nope, you're absolutely right.
All right, any other old business? Okay, then moving on to new business. I know Mr. Field said he had something.
I want to thank Mr. Howard. He looks like, oh. I don't know if you know, but Mr. Howard's recently retired and he has now come up to the city and he has taken over the great challenge of building a volunteer program for us. And he's been putting a lot of hard work into this and just to let you know, I've given him everything so we can hold Mr. Howard responsible now. Now, I'm just kidding. Truly, I want to thank you because of what you've done and I know you've been working with our community and public relations person and getting those things out and getting some advertisements. So the crowd out here, if you want to, if you want to volunteer, there are many things that we have, I think, available that we need assistance with and we need help with, please contact Mr. Howard and volunteer because we need to really get this up and running and get it going. And I think the more interest that we're seeing in the city, the better off we all are. And again, talking about, you know, being physically responsible, this would be getting, you know, hopefully more things done with less resources, at least monetarily that we have, but appreciate it and build community. So thank you, Mr. Howard. And I wanted to, since you didn't say anything about this tonight, I wanted to say thank you for taking that over and doing a great job of it. Thank you.
Little port to how progress this time goes along.
No pressure. We're not, we're not putting any pressure on you.
Great job. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Any other new business?
Mr. Meyer, I have two items.
Yes, Mr. Meyer.
I know we've got a bunch of stuff in the committee meeting docket, but there's two points or two things that I wanted to request that we added. The first one is to talk about the proposed budget amendment to fund the additional roads that Mr. Vioxx and others have talked about. I know we, there seemed to be some support for that, so I'd like to ask that we add that to talk about transferring the additional funds from the, our reserves into the capital fund. The second item that I would like, and perhaps this is one that can wait a little bit because we have some time, but is to talk about changing our, the ordinance that directs money from the payroll tax, changing that from a half percent to three quarters of a percent so that we're totally, fully funding the capital fund expenditures and can eliminate that transfer. And that should be a budget neutral move.
And just, do you want to discuss that on the 20th?
I'd like to.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other new business? All right, we'll move on to legislation. The first item on, under legislation is an ordinance regarding home businesses. This is the second reading.
This is an ordinance amending the Erlanger zoning ordinance, amending requirements governing home occupations. By summary, this is a housekeeping measure to some extent where we are making a text amendment. By summary, we are making additions to the text such as not allowing more than one person not residing in the home shall be permitted to engage in the business and that the selling of any commodity shall be ancillary to the home occupation and done primarily through the internet or telecommunications. This was recommended at the PDS public hearing in May and it was recommended because the proposed text amendment is allowed to be included within the text pursuant to KRS 100.203 and that the proposed text amendment is consistent with the definition of a home occupation which is a necessary use customarily conducted within a dwelling as permitted herein.
All right, do we have a motion? Oh, no, excuse me, this is a roll call vote. Oh, no, I'm sorry. That's what I get for trying to get ahead of myself on the paperwork part. Okay, do we have a motion to adopt this ordinance as presented? Motion by Mrs. Sudcamp, second by Mr. Meyer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Or roll call vote.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. The next one is an ordinance regarding the 2016, 2017 tax rates. This is the second reading.
This is an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, providing for the annual assessment of all real estate and personal property within the city of Erlanger, which is subject to taxation thereby for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2016 and ending on June 30, 2017 and providing for the payment and collection of such taxes and the penalties and interest thereon and describing the purpose for which the tax is so collected shall be appropriated and used. The tax on real property is .3370 dollars for each $100 of value thereof and the ad valorem tax on all personal property other than motor vehicles will be at the rate of .5890 dollars for each $100. Further, that there would be, that all taxes levied pursuant to terms of this ordinance shall be due and payable on the first day of October of 2016. They should be pay, those would be subject to a 2% discount and all would be late after December 31, 2016. The discount is only good through the end of October.
All right, do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor, or, no, I'm sorry, roll call vote again, excuse me.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. Next item is a municipal order regarding a sidewalk study.
I just got handed the attachment to the sidewalks survey. This is a survey of 32.219 sidewalk miles at a survey total cost of $11,276.65. This is a municipal order of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to execute the attached contract, which again is for $11,276.65, with precision concrete cutting for a sidewalk study consisting of phase one, which is 18.89 miles of sidewalk, and phase two, 13.329 miles of sidewalk.
All right, do I have a motion to adopt as presented? Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mrs. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, then, the final item is a resolution regarding the map amendment filing authority on Houston Road.
So a resolution sponsoring a proposed zoning map amendment that the city of Erlanger County of Kenton County, Kentucky, allows the city's economic director, David Hahn, is an agent in the city's legislative body, which should be authorized to apply and propose the following to be studied instead of a public hearing pursuant to KRS 200.211. It is a zoning map amendment for the properties located at 645 Erlanger Road and 1A Houston[1706.13]